Good evening. I would like to call the August 27, 2019 Mathacton School Board of Directors meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. In matters of attendance, all board members are in attendance with the exception of Ms. Kim Aubrey Larsonis. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thanks, Ms. Drummond. This evening, we have a report from Shepherd Restoration, which is a subcontractor to provide services for the district. And they had done a study on the Eagleville Elementary School. So before we get them forward, I want to ask James from Fedavia to come forward and introduce them, talk about the work that they've done, and then we'll move on with the report. The board members should have a copy of this evening's report here. We'll drop the screen down, and they'll project the report onto the screen as they talk about it. James, you want to introduce her?
Yes, no problem. We have tonight Stephanie Valentine, Stephanie Valentine from Shepherd Restoration Engineers. We had asked them last year to actually begin review of the building to do the restoration of repairs of what we found in the 1917 report from another consultant. And we brought them onboard to review the building using those reports. And we established that we needed to do, after consulting with the committee, the property committee, we looked at doing additional probes of the walls just to establish how extensive the issue that we have with that building. And what we have tonight is the evaluation of all those probes that were carried out this summer.
And so we were asked to look at Eagleville Elementary School, which was built in 2002. And a report was done in 2017 as a result of water infiltration and insect infestation that was observed at the building. And to see, the 2017 report found deficiencies with the flashing and with the weeps. So we were asked to do an investigation to see how extensive those conditions were, if they were sort of isolated, or if they were found all around the whole building. The building is broken into two halves, basically. There is the gymnasium section on the north side, which is a CMU construction with a brick veneer. And then the south side, which is where the classrooms are, which is a stud construction with brick veneer. So we did a total of 44 probes, both on the CMU section and on the stud wall section to see what the flashing conditions were and stuff. So we opened up areas that were about 16 by 16 inches to review the wall, reviewed the conditions, and then they were filled back with metal panels. So that's what, if you go to the building now, that's what you'll see, our metal panels in all these locations that we opened up. So the, I did somewhere, so that's what that was. This is a mapping of what we found. So on the wall elevation, so I broke the deficiencies down into four major categories, which is mortar that is too hard. That's an issue because when you have too hard of mortar, water can't evacuate from the building. And it also create, it allows for brick movement in the, once there's movement, thermal movement or water movement or whatever in the wall. If the mortar is too hard, it makes, means the brick will crack instead of the mortar cracking. And the mortar is meant to be sacrificial to the brick. So that's an issue. So eventually, you will see more brick cracking if the mortar stays that hard. Also, so that's the orange color that you see on your, on the elevations. Also, the green color is missing mortar net. Mortar net helps prevent debris sitting on top of the flashing or the weeps or whatever so that water, again, can evacuate from the wall. That ranged from missing to just the wrong type of mortar net. Also, unsecure masonry ties, which are what you're seeing in the red color. So this is where, in the stud wall construction, masonry ties are meant to be anchored directly into the stud because it's a structural fastener. And this wasn't done in most, in some cases. So the masonry ties were not actually anchored to the structural backup wall. And then the purple color that you see there is ineffective flashing. So this means that, again, the flashing just doesn't help get the water out of the wall, which is its job, is to direct water out of the wall. So that's what you see mapped on the drawing there. So we went through, just kind of buzzed through the conditions that were found. The bricks that were there were not, not what was specified. What was specified was an eight-inch brick. What's there is a 16-inch brick, which is called a Roman brick, which has a false joint in the middle of it. It doesn't create any issue, it's just they do it so it's faster to install. It just means that you're, you have to, where you locate your control joints is actually is supposed to be closer than farther apart, which is what you'll see. The mortar net, mortar net, again, it just allows water to evacuate. So that ranged from the correct mortar net being installed on the north side, and then as you come around the, or on the, sorry, on the east side, and as you come around the building, they actually switched to a mortar net that wasn't sized properly for the wall. It was also a single level, which means it doesn't allow for the mortar debris to be captured correctly. And a lot of that was filled. And we also found a few locations where insects had gotten into the wall and actually filled out the mortar net with their nest. So there was at least one section that was three foot long that was a solid bees nest that had been made in the mortar net itself. The brick ties, all the brick ties on the CMU section of the building, the north side, were all fine. It was all DuraWall, there was no issue with that. There's no issue with any of the ties on the CMU sections. It's just the stud wall construction where those are pulling out from, or can't be pulled out from the wall. The lintels, the lintels are all fine, they're all galvanized metal, there's no issue with corrosion on those, everything was good. We weren't able to verify the condition they found in the 2017 report, which had them, which found them that they were kicked backwards, again, holding water. We weren't able to confirm that condition. But they were all in good shape, even though you see the paint peeling, the paint's just a superficial thing, it's nothing to worry about on those. But the flashing on those lintels was insufficient for what took, again, direct water out of the building. We also looked at the flashing. The flashing was the biggest inconsistency throughout the building. In every condition, it was done differently. There's multiple types of flashing. Sometimes it's not high enough, sometimes they just didn't put it in, sometimes they used the building paper and just folded it in half and called that flashing. It's just, it's really inconsistent. You can see on the drawing here that where they've inverted the flashing, they've actually installed it upside down, creating a pocket for water to sit. And the same thing on the one on the right, where they created a pocket for water and debris to sit in there, so water's not being directed out of the building. The weeps that were there, they were the plastic weeps, which are, is what sort of industry standard was back in 2002. They're not UV stable, so they have cracked and some of them are broken, some are missing that they were just never installed. And they are the open type, which means insects can crawl in and out pretty easily without obstruction and get into that cavity wall and build their nest. We also reviewed the sheathing. The sheathing was reviewed in several locations, but as they were typically at the edges of equipment, like the vents and windows and stuff, they were really ragged edges, they weren't nice sort of crisp edges. So there's a lot of space in between that for either the insects to get in or water, moisture, any of that stuff to actually get in beyond the sheathing and not stop at the sheathing wall itself. The building paper felt was used as the building paper, which that's industry standard, that was all fine. It was, it was all stapled to there, but not stapled per the industry standard, which is every 12 inches vertically and horizontally. So that was inconsistent throughout. Insulation could only be reviewed in one location, well, the bad insulation could only be reviewed in one location because the sheathing didn't go all the way down to the bottom, so there were open areas in the sheathing as well. But none of that was wet, nothing was found to be, you know, poor about the insulation itself. On the CMU section of the building, where spray foam was installed, which is correct, that's what was supposed to be installed per their specifications, but the specified dimension was two inches in order to get the R value required to help the building, you know, function as it's supposed to. The thickness of the foam insulation varied from about a quarter of an inch anywhere to an inch and a half. So with that level of inconsistency, you're not getting the R value that you were expecting, like that was designed for, which could be an issue with your mechanical system, and you're just not getting the sort of efficiency that you would have expected to get from the designed system. For the sealant, the sealant from the windows was actually recently repaired, so all of that around the windows was all fine, it was all functioning as it was supposed to. At the control joints, you're starting to see separation from that. But the mortar, or the, sorry, the sealant is more than 10 years old at this point. So that's a typical thing for this, it's just reached its lifespan. So that's a pretty typical repair that you would see. And then biological soiling, which is the, if you've been to the building, you'll see some really dark staining under some of the windows and stuff in the mortar itself. And that is biological growth. And typically, that's just an indicator of there's water sitting in the wall somewhere, that that wall's just not drying out the way you would expect it to dry out. And the reality of that is it's mostly as a result of the flashing, because waters just can't get out to the front, to the face of the building to be evaporated, to just get out of the wall. So that's why you're seeing that sort of dark staining that we see around the building. So our recommendations for that is to basically treat the building in the two halves, the two construction halves. So that the north side of the building, that is the CMU construction, that you can do repairs to. You can actually take out areas of brick that, you know, the top, the heads and the sills of the windows, and actually flash those correctly so that water will get out. Same at doors, and then at all the locations where there are weeps, you'd have to remove brick and actually repair that. So, but that is a doable repair. On the stud wall construction, the southern side of the building, that we're actually recommending to remove all of the brick back down to the stud wall construction. And we're recommending that because of the brick ties, because our, in our observation and stuff, about between 35 and 40% of the ties could be pulled out of the wall. And so that's not a great condition, because they're meant to take care of the lateral forces of the wall on the brick. So we would recommend actually taking down all of that brick and then putting back a new cladding system, which could be anything, it could be brick, it could be metal panel, it could be whatever you decide. But that way, you will actually get a functioning wall system that is sound, and it'll take care of your insect issue, it'll take care of your mortar net issue, it'll take care of all the water issues that are happening at that, at all of those locations. And we don't think a repair option is really meaningful for that section of the building, simply because if you were to take out all the heads and the sills of the windows and all, where all of the weeps are, and try to address all the ties, there'd be, you'd be saving about six brick, and that would be, you know, all that was left of the wall. So we think taking down wholesale is the right thing to do. And as part of that, when you put back your new cladding, you will be required to meet today's Energy Efficiency Code or Energy Codes, which will mean adding insulation to the wall. So we're adding about seven and a half, the required insulation. The bad insulation is fine, and we'll meet the current code for the interior insulation, but we will be required to add continuous insulation on the outside. So I have to add about seven and a half, an R value of seven and a half of insulation, which is about inch and three quarters or so of insulation on the building, and then put back whatever cladding system is selected for that. So in terms of what your options are for cladding, there's, of course, thousands of different types of cladding systems, so that would be something we would need to work with you guys in terms of what you would want to put back, what the aesthetic is that you're, that you're going for. But there's all different types of rain screen systems. You could do a hybrid system if you didn't want to put back brick, you could put brick down low and metal panel up high. You could do sort of any variation of cladding system that you'd be looking to do. And so, and all of those systems, you know, are, can be made for a retrofit system essentially, so we can keep the stud wall there, all of that stuff is, would be good. We would just start from that stud wall and work out. So, and that would still support whatever system that we were to put back. So you wouldn't have any sort of structural issues with that. Just, we would just have to work from that stud wall out and start addressing the building from, from that surface, that plane out. In terms of next steps, it would be just to decide what, how to move forward, how you guys see moving forward, if you accept that recommendation, you know, what materials to put back, and how to design that stuff.
Thank you very much. Just, we're going to take some questions from members of the board at this point in time. Anyone to my right?
Thank you for coming. I'm a member of the property committee, so I appreciate hearing about it, but I am very aware of the situation. My one question to you is based on all the issues and what, and your findings, when, I mean, I've heard of problems there since I've been on the board for four years. When do you suspect there were issues that someone, that someone started to notice or should have noticed?
That's hard to say, because, you know, I don't know when the building was turned over and, you know, and what sequence the building was constructed in. But based on some of the stuff that we see, especially with the flashing, because the flashing, there was no, there were no turnbars used, there were no end dams, there were no things that actually sort of capture water and would actually allow water to go behind the flashing. So even if it had been, even it had been there, it wouldn't have, it wasn't installed correctly. So, and there were some locations where they just took roofing cement, just muck, and tried to glue it to the wall. And that, that's obviously has failed for some time. Whether or not anyone would notice those kind of things, I don't, I mean, I don't know. Water goes wherever water wants to go, so whether or not it got to where someone could see it, that's not something I could really answer.
Any other questions from people to the right? Mr. Navrat?
Yeah, Stephanie, thanks for coming tonight. I know, as Andrea said, we've been talking about this at Eagleville for quite some time. And the problems with moisture in that building have existed for quite some time, have been reported for quite some time. In your opinion, are these, are these normal deficiencies to see in this type of construction? You know, if somebody, you know, does a less than adequate job, you know, there are normal things you would expect to find, you know, in the course of a construction project. This, to me, seems rather gratuitous.
Yeah, I think the flashing especially is, especially since it's so inconsistent, there's no, it's not like I can say it was installed bad, but it was installed consistently bad, because every location was different, every method was different. So that's something that you wouldn't typically see, because, you know, usually, you know, as a flashing person, they would be like, alright, this is how, it's obviously not an issue with the detail, because they weren't following a detail. Like if it was consistent all the way around, you could say, oh, that was a bummer of a detail, and it just didn't work out. But this is not, this is not that. I mean, there are so many different versions of how to install the flashing that it's not there. In terms of the ties in the stud wall construction, that's not typical. I mean, there's industry standards that set up how this is supposed to be done. There's the International Masonry Institute, which actually does training for all masons, so that they're supposed to know that that's not how the tie goes. They're supposed to know how the anchors go in, they're supposed to be trained in all this stuff. So I would say that it is, it is beyond what I've seen in just where, you know, it's the end of the day and somebody's hurrying up kind of stuff. This is much more extensive than what I've seen in the past.
So as we go forward, and we're going to replace this facade, and we're going to do what we need to do to get this building back into good shape, we're also talking about other major construction projects within the district. How do we avoid another catastrophe like this?
Site supervision is a big deal. And I think that, based on what I saw, because you'll find the softer, more typical mortar is actually on the east side, you'll see the more correct mortar net is on the east side. There's a couple of places where they actually had the correct flashing, which is on the east side. So it seemed like there was like site supervision on one side, but maybe it didn't get all the way around. So I think that's the biggest thing, is just making sure that people are there watching what's going on.
And it has to be to that level of somebody being there all the time to hold somebody's feet to the fire? Is this a contractor issue?
It's not all the time thing, but, you know, I mean, you know, I say, I mean, having someone there all the time, probably, I've never had that be necessary, because I'm usually at, you know, you're at the kickoff meeting, you're at, you know, this is my expectation, you go over everything with the contractor and stuff, and then, you know, you come back, you know, once, twice a week and check it out, and you make sure, and, I mean, you'll never catch everything, because that's just not reality. But, but yeah, they have to know what level of expectation and know that they will be held accountable for it, so.
As far as cladding systems, and we're going to have to make a decision as to what we do going forward, and I'm sure we'll be back in front of property, and we'll be talking about, you know, all these different systems. But I think it's important, because of the size of this project, that the whole board gets some of this information now. Are there any systems you would recommend over others?
Um...
You know, are there pros and cons to each of them?
Yeah, I mean, everything's got its, got its really great things and has its not-so-great things, and it sort of is really site-specific, because if you're, I mean, the metal panels are great, and they have, they're really fast to install. So you, you know, you put up a grid system, and you can hang them on there, and it's all like really quick, and you can actually get where your insulation is incorporated into the panel itself, so that you're not having to add, having to add another layer of insulation, another, you know, another install, another system, basically. So that's really great, but they have a much higher front-end cost than like if you were to do brick, which takes longer to install, but is a cheaper, you know, front-end material, like a cheaper material to make it out of. So everything kind of, you sort of have to weigh what you're doing, and if, all of them, I would say everything has a good durability, like as long as you are choosing the right, like you're not trying to cheap out, basically, like everyone, like there's always like the really nice brick, and then there's the not really great brick, and that, you know, the really nice metal panel, and then the not-so-nice metal panel. So everything's got, you know, there's a range from, in all materials, so.
I'm sure we'll be digging into that deeper. Thank you.
Any other questions to my right? Mr. Ryan?
I think Mr. Navrat and I must be on the same page tonight, two similar type of questions. The first revolving around, as we go through projects like this, you obviously need building permits, you need inspections. This type of work, how does that kind of make its way through? Is it just, you know, they inspected it when it was framed, and then they missed, it was all done by the time the final? Or, you know, how does that kind of make its way through?
Yeah, I couldn't tell you what the inspection was like. I couldn't, like, I wasn't here, so I don't know, you know, who, I don't know how, I don't know what. So I've never had anything like this happen, you know, before, so I don't, I don't know how it would have gotten that way, so.
I think that would be an interesting follow-up, maybe, for the property committee to try to dig into and to see, you know, what we can find from back then. I mean, it's, to this point, it's too late now, but just in terms of, you know, how this did happen.
Can I just follow up real quick on that? What would be typical in a job in terms of when, when an inspection on a building like this should occur? At what different stages? Because that gets to Mike's point of, you know, when in the process was this missed? Was it just a lack inspection, somebody just waved a hand at it? Or there should have been inspections over the course of the installation of the facade that identified these deficiencies?
Yeah, a lot of times, you'll get an inspection basically at each system. So when the stud wall winds up, the structural engineer would have come up and reviewed the stud wall, or your building inspector would review the stud wall construction to make sure all that, you know, it's, you know, secured at this many inches on center, and this is how it is, and whatever, to ensure that. And then when your sheathing goes up, you would have another inspection. And then when your building paper goes up, you have another inspection. So each system kind of carries its own inspections. So you would have seen it several times throughout, so.
If I, if I could, I think what would be helpful is let us go back into the records and find out if we had a clerk of the works or an owner's rep at that time, to see if the district had a third party, you know, supervising that particular work. I would say that if potentially an absence of that, that might lead us to, you know, a conclusion of why this may have occurred. So, but let me check, and we'll get back to the board on that.
Thank you. My last question is, I know part of this is the decision of the board with which type of panel we choose, whether we do the metal, you list the zinc panel, the split phase brick. Have we put any, you know, low estimate, I'm assuming brick is probably the cheapest of the options, to do this entire project versus the metal panel? I mean, do we have any type of ballpark at this point, or is it too early for that?
We, what we did was for the 2020 budget, there was actually a couple of options that we had in there. And we went with the original estimate of $1 million, and that was for the restoration of the masonry. However, if you look at the document that was presented to the board, you will see that we had another number of 1.5 million plus soft costs, which I think it came out to 1.75, 725 actually. We had that as a budget number. However, in talking to our consultant, it also depends on what system you go for. We may need to look at the HVAC system inside the building. If we change the R value outside, we're going to have to look at the system inside as well. So these numbers I've got at the moment is between 1 million and 1.5 million. But that is, at the moment, a budget number.
And is that budget number using a specific type of system?
We based it originally off of just replacing it with brick.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I know we discussed this, and once we had the report within property committee, we thought it was best that this was presented for the entire board. I thank you for explaining in detail what has occurred, although it's not the outcome we were hoping for.
Sorry.
Left, Mr. Winters?
Thank you for the summary and keeping it in plain English for us to understand clearly. Well done. First question is, you mentioned industry standard. Is that the industry standard of today or the industry standard of 2002 at the time? I'm making a generic comment, but sometimes industry standard today, when you're looking at it, obviously...
It's different, yeah.
They up the game on the standards, right?
Yeah, so I would say the only thing that's really changed from 2002 to now would be the insulation, in terms of quantifying how the R value is determined. Everything else is all really standard, you know, 100-year-old stuff. Like, you always have flashing that covers your lintel, you always have end dams, you always, like, this is stuff that's not new. Like, there's nothing, there's nothing fancy about your building. Like, everything's really standard construction, so.
Okay, thank you. It's frustrating to hear Mathacton being unique again here in some type of situation that sounds like from avoidable, no matter where the root cause is. You answered the question on the mechanical system a little bit, but do we believe that some of the issues that we have were also contributing to the failure of the mechanical system or properly?
I mean, Mark's better to answer that. There was noted, like, water staining and stuff on some of the ceiling tiles and stuff, and that was all attributable to mechanical equipment and pipes and stuff like that, that had nothing to do with the walls. So where that line is drawn, I couldn't...
Okay. All right. And then, I don't know what the legal aspects are, but I certainly would like to know for anything that we do moving forward, who was involved in the process, all the players. So I asked Dr. Zerbi for identifying, doing a deep dive into the history of who was involved in the process, because it certainly could be a consideration for future projects. Thank you.
I just want to add to that, Paul. We also talked a little bit about property, about helping our administrators, and I don't, whether it's a building principal or facilitators, you know, just making them more aware of what structural things they need to look for, like, what's not a big deal? You know, because even myself, working in a school building, I was in a room the other day, and there was a problem. And I don't think most teachers would step up and say something. But because I've sat on this property committee and seen how many millions of dollars we have to spend on this kind of thing, I brought it to my principal's attention. So I think I also asked for the, just, you know, if we wind up voting tonight to build a, to build a new building, we need people to be aware of what they need to look for. Doesn't have to be a long training or anything, just a mention of it. Because there's, you know, there's lots of spokes or cogs to this wheel that didn't happen.
Any other comments?
My only question, I guess, is warranties and lifespans. So knowing, like, a window has a 10-year warranty, so that company is responsible for any defects or poor workmanship they had done, is that a, is there a lifespan or workmanship? they had done, is that a, is there a lifespan or workmanship on this type of work?
Typically, yes, the contractor is responsible for a certain time. I've not seen the contract, I don't know what that timeframe was, um, but yeah, typically they have. Um, it's broken down into, um, both workmanship and into materials, um, and so a lot of times the manufacturer will carry the warranty for the material, um, whereas the contractor will carry the warranty for the installation of that. So, um, it really is just dependent on how things are written out, so.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, kind of comment on that, uh, we had, uh, some discussion that almost maybe a year, possibly even two years ago, so this is how old this conversation has been with regards to the construction and the people involved and what, um, what things we could be, uh, we could have legal, uh, opportunity to, uh, recover. Um, and, uh, we, we could certainly, uh, have, uh, have another executive session, pull the rest of the board in on that particular conversation, because I think it's important for everyone to know that, A, as Ms. Cancro has brought up to our attention, that, um, you know, poor workmanship and, and, you know, is, is not necessarily a, uh, an excuse for, you know, for supervision. So while we're looking at it from one perspective, the other perspective, I think we, we can call a, a session or at least educate the, the full board on, on the things that we have done so far to address that very, of those very concerns about the windows, the, the craftsmanship, uh, so it's not like it's going unlooked at. Mr. Drummond, you've been waiting patiently, thank you.
Along these lines of what Ms. Cancro brought up, I just was, so it sounds like this is 17 years ago that this was built and what should have been the useful life of this facade? And the second part of that is what kind of longevity can we get, can we expect from any new cladding that we install, just to have a sense of how that might amortize out?
Uh, I mean, for most materials, especially like metal panel and those kind of systems, um, you'll typically get about a 20, 15 to 20-year warranty depending on your manufacturer and the type of system that you select. Um, in terms of the durability of like brick itself, I mean, you know, there, I've worked on buildings 200 years old that are brick and are fine and it's all, you know, as long as it's done correctly, it, like you shouldn't have durability issues, um, with that kind of material, but, but, I mean, will anybody warrant it for 200 years? No, but, um, but you will have, I mean, durability out of, out of materials longer than what you would have expected. You should have expected more out of what you got, so.
Thank you, and thank you for the report and I, I find this just really all very surprising. Thank you.
Any other questions for people on the left? Anyone to my right, Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, just one, just one more request. There's a lot of, uh, teachers and administrators and staff in that building, um, that have raised concerns about this for some time. It might be worth maybe you and Mark just going over there to inform them and kind of bringing this down a level. Obviously, we're kind of into the nuts and bolts, but it's probably worth it just to go and educate the staff over there about what we found and, and what we're talking about as far as how we're gonna remediate it.
Thank you for that recommendation. Any other comments? If, if no more comments, um, I think the next steps, Mr. Navarrette, uh, as chairman of the, uh, Property and Transportation Committee, we should put this on the agenda and set a timeline for, uh, decision-making as to when we want, uh, potential, uh, addressing this issue.
Yeah, I think we talked about the property, we wanted to have James and Mark correct my memory, I think what we talked about was, um, having documents, it's got something selected, something bid out for, um, at least design work done by October, right, for an RFQ for selection in January?
Yeah, the game plan was to go out in January and get the, the documents back in February. Uh, said, if I take that back, I think it may have been December, January, but it was around about that duration.
Yeah, I know, we're pushing early rather than later, so let's just make sure that we understand what the timeline needs to be when.
Yeah.
We need to make our decisions here in this room, um, and in property, so that we get, um, we get this out on time, so this doesn't slip one more year.
Understood.
One more question on that, and I apologize, I don't remember, but I know that we've approved for some of the, what we plan on using the borrowing for next year. Was the $1 million that, uh, James mentions before something we have approved preliminarily or it hasn't even come to us, uh, at this point?
Yeah, it was part of the, uh, I believe it was $14 million that you approved to get documents and, uh, plans and bids prepared. Is that correct, James?
That is correct, the $1 million was included in there and we had the alternate in there that was not, uh, added into there, because we did not have the report at that moment in time.
Okay, so the budget was built around that, around the non-alternate?
Correct.
Any other comments or questions? Scott? Thank you, James, thank you, Stephanie. And that ends, uh, guests as scheduled speakers for this evening.
Dr. Zerby, excuse me. Dr. Zerby, I would like to bring up one thing about that, uh, subject. At Eagleville, something else that's gonna come in and I would rather talk about, at least bring it up now, um, so everybody's cognizant of it. Because of the systems that we have that are through the wall, that, that also, mechanical systems, uh, unit ventilators, et cetera, that also will tie into this. So at the same time, we'll be talking about what we need to do on the outside, we have to be forward-thinking and look at the mechanical system that we have in place and be able to prepare for that at the same time. So when we go to do the system, we'll understand where we're going with mechanicals.
Yeah, it's a good point, Mark. So we have more engineering, um, was it, was it more?
Yes.
I think we approved, right, to come back and do a study in all the elementary buildings, right?
Yes.
See what they did at the high school and propose remediation for that building. Um, is there, can we expedite that and make sure that they're looking at Eagleville first and if there's a way to tie this in?
Yes.
If nothing else, we're, I don't know that we want to be tackling the HVAC there next summer too.
Right.
But at least we can be prepared for what we need to do.
Yep.
Let's not make two cuts in that facade if we don't have.
That was it, thank you.
I guess one more, one more question, Mark, while you're standing there. Are there any other remediative actions that we should be taking now to protect the exterior of that building and prevent any water intrusion through that facade? Is there anything we can do? I mean, is.
Well, certainly there's applications, I'm sure Stephanie could talk to that, that you could do applications of, um, of sealant on the brick that would minimize the amount of penetration that we get through water through that, uh, exterior brick that could stop, you know, potentially stop some of that. Is how are those dollars spent and cost, I don't know at this point, to be able to answer that, but certainly there are protective things. And I believe years ago, on that particular section of wall that was above the principal's office in that area, that actually was done, but the issue in that particular area wasn't because of that, a lot of that had to do with the gasking of the windows, which we've have taken care of. So we have taken the gaskets, which was a great step, that we've controlled some of that stuff already, that's helped. Um, we certainly went after, uh, standing roof leaks that were there in places of the building that we've identified, we've identified some other things with some insulation and took care of some of that stuff, so when I see something in the middle of the building, I know it's not coming from the walls, it's coming from either a pipe or, and we have addressed those. So, you know, it would be, um, a question of whether we wanted to spend any extra money for this time to, to do anything on the exterior yet as far as an application.
Yeah, and I don't want to spend good money after bad.
Understood.
I want to make sure that if we are gonna, we are gonna address the HVAC system in that building and if it is gonna mean replacing unit ventilators and it is gonna mean different cuts on the outside of those buildings or, or different openings, that we do this, we try to do it all in, in one set, I mean, at that point it just becomes an economic decision, right, what's the, what's the least expensive way for us to proceed, so let's just keep that in mind as we go forward.
Thank you so much.
Stephanie, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, um, Finance Committee, Mr. Earnshaw.
Uh, thank you. The Finance Committee met on August 14th, the meeting was called to order at 6:30 PM. All committee members except Mr. Navarrette were in attendance. Uh, first item on the agenda was review of the monthly reports, which included the list of bills, the treasurer's report, expenditure and revenue, expenditures and revenue reports, and the monthly healthcare consortium reports. Uh, discussion topics included the tax appeal appraisal services, which is on the agenda for approval tonight, uh, the discussion about the per capita tax, uh, which I led that discussion and the discussion revolved around eliminating that per, per capita tax and reasons therefore are outlined in the minutes. Uh, Mr. Bricker provided an update on the 2018-19 fiscal year, end of, end of year fiscal, financial projection, and the highlight there is that the projected surplus for the past fiscal year is 1.6 million dollars. Uh, finally, Mr. Dr. Zerby provided an update on the capital campaign relating to the Fields project that was completed several years ago. And during courtesy of the floor, we heard from Joe Bickelman, Jim Mollick, and John Andrews, uh, their discussion topics were outlined in the minutes and the meeting adjourned at 7:41 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Now, Property, Transportation Committee, Mr. Navarrette.
Yeah, the Property and Transportation Committee met on, uh, Monday, August 19th. Uh, all committee members were in attendance, as were, uh, Dr. Zerby, Mr. Bricker, and Mr. Fretz and Mr. Miller from Fidavia. Um, we, we went through the capital projects from last year, which we are still cleaning up some of the work from the auditorium. Uh, there are a couple of punch list items that are still outstanding that, uh, are now in the process of being completed, that will check the box on last year's projects. Uh, Mr. Miller gave us, uh, a number of project summaries for the projects that are undergoing, that are on the, uh, on the docket this summer, most of which are nearing completion or at this point, as of today, probably are mostly complete. Um, the roof masonry, MEP work at the high school nearing completion, we just talked about Eagleville, um, there's stormwater rerouting going on, uh, at Woodland, including some, some little MEP work, uh, all of which, uh, is moving forward, um, and, and again, near completion. Um, for next, uh, for next year, we talked about, um, an exterior storage option, um, at the high school, uh, which we discussed, uh, a little bit during the work session last week as well, um, relating to, uh, replacing the post-brom closet and the idea of being replaced as a, a bathroom. Also, the committee was presented with a modified design for a canopy that has been proposed over rear ends to the high school. Um, that redesign was required, uh, to maintain the structural integrity of that canopy. There is more information coming back on the committee, to the committee before it comes back to the board. Um, under Transportation, Mr. Bricker provided us an update on recent developments in routing and transportation in preparation for the school year, so I hope everything is going well at this point. I think there's cross for tomorrow. Um, under courtesy of the floor, there were two different sessions. Um, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Bickelman, and Dr. Mollick, uh, spoke during the first session and during the second session, uh, Mr. Bickelman, Dr. Mollick, Mr. Andrews, and Ms. Samini spoke during the second, the meeting was adjourned at 8:28 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrette. Now to the Education Committee, Ms. Reese.
We did not have an August meeting, but our next meeting is September 4th.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Ms. Hall.
The Policy Committee did not meet this month and I haven't.
Thank you. The intermediate unit, Mr. Ryan.
The intermediate unit did not meet in July and our August meeting is actually tomorrow night, so I have no report either.
Thank you. I can speak for the North Monco Technical Career Center, we did not, our meeting was canceled this month, so we'll be meeting in September. There are no student board representatives here, I don't believe there's anyone, no report from the Mathacton Education Foundation. Communications, Ms. Kelly.
I have a few quick items I'd like to share. Uh, this week, we welcomed new and returning Mathacton teachers and support staff for two days of in-service. Uh, tomorrow, we will welcome our students as we kick off an exciting new school year of learning and growing. Last week, we shared the district's first-ever welcome back-to-school video. If you haven't checked it out yet, just go to the district's homepage, it's the first headline under featured news. Another back-to-school news, uh, this year's theme is Be The One, To Empower, To Encourage, To Inspire. We invite our school community to connect with us on Twitter and share the positive impact the Be The One to make this year. Tweet us at Mathacton using the hashtag BeTheOne. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next, superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Aside from the trip advisements and the personnel advisements, um, I'd like to welcome, uh, back our, our staff to, uh, and our students tomorrow, uh, to what, uh, we anticipate being a, uh, an excellent school year. And I also, in advance of the Labor Day holiday, want to wish, uh, members of the board and the public, uh, a joyous, uh, Labor Day holiday.
Thank you. Now we will take public comment on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on board action items. If there's anyone with any comment, please approach the podium. Thank you.
I have a handout for everybody at the table. Are you starting? I want to wait till everybody has the handout, if you don't mind. I made one for everybody. Good evening, my name's, uh, Joe Bickelman from Audubon. I'm speaking about action item 13D, to approve architectural services for a new Arrowhead for 5.4% of the construction cost, which could approximate 1.5 million dollars for architectural services. The handout I gave you shows the current status of, uh, the district as far as K through 8 goes. I used Dr. Zerby's building functional capacity, I don't, I don't think we should build a new Arrowhead, I think we should close the current one. So I use the functional capacity of, uh, January 15th, compared it to district enrollment as of June 2019, and you, the big problem the district has is Arcola, it's 59% utilized, okay? And you need to address that issue. So, item number two, closes Arrowhead and the remaining schools, Eagleville, Woodland, and Worcester are K through 3. And you can see the enrollment divided by functional capacity there along that line under number 2, Eagleville, Woodland, and Worcester is 93%. If you add, uh, you know, we're talking about adding rooms, the architect brought up some information about adding rooms, uh, to Worcester, like four rooms. If you would add four rooms at the three schools, Eagleville, Woodland, and Worcester, it would reduce that 93% enrollment to functional capacity number down to 78% and the total would, uh, come from 90% down to 84% and you would be utilizing our, uh, Arcola the way it should be used. That's for K through 3. Item number 3 is another option, uh, it's, uh, closing Arrowhead and moving 6th grade to, uh, from Skyview to Arcola and using Skyview as a K through 5. If you see the district's enrollment for June as a, uh, divided by the functional capacity for Skyview, Eagleville, Woodland, and Worcester, see it's at 91%, but adding those four rooms at those three schools would bring the number from 91% down to 81% and the total from 90% down to 84%. We're gonna spend $35 million to build a new Arrowhead, millions of dollars in debt interest on top of that. If we close Arrowhead, we save a million dollars a year, every year, which would more than help pay for those rooms at the other schools, which you can use for enrollment growth and full-day kindergarten if we ever see a presentation on its benefits. So I think what you should do is consider closing Arrowhead, saving $35 million, plus millions of dollars in interest, uh, to build a new one. You would also save money not repairing an Arrowhead by closing it and that costs $14 Another reason not to build a new Arrowhead, uh, back in 1617, we got estimates from AEM, District Consultant, and Fidavia, to rebuild would be 22 million. The architect said it's, it's gonna be 34 million in 2019. Back in 1617, to repair Arrowhead was 14 million, the architect said it would be 28 million to repair it. So I hope you take my handout home, look at it, write some pros and cons down about everything, curriculum, using this facilities the way they should be, balancing out the utilization to the functional capacity, and saving a lot of money, a lot of money, that could be used for improving the new programs at the high school and throughout the district. If you save money, you can improve, uh, the programs for the kids, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If anyone else has any comment on board action items, please approach the podium.
Just a few minutes ago, there was some attention given to what one director at least called a catastrophe, specifically in the building of Eagleville. Process wasn't followed. The construction did not meet the plans, et cetera, et cetera. Well, yesterday, I sent a letter to Dr. Zerby with copy to the board, and again, there's a process. And the Arrowhead Forward website shows a project schedule with a vote meeting on October 22nd. And here you are in August, the dead of summer, doing, planning to do that vote. It's on the agenda. So, the public doesn't know about it, because they're following what's on the website saying October 22nd. Then, there was several presentations last week by your architect, KCBA, and by your business manager, Mr. Bricker. The Bricker slides were illegible at the meeting room. Neither of those presentations have been posted for the public to review them. And then, we got the survey comments that came out Thursday or Friday. 12 pages of fine print. How do you expect the public to know about this meeting or to comment intelligently when you have, in practice, a lack of transparency, whereas the process is for transparency as a stated board policy? And in the letter to Dr. Zerby, I ask that the vote be delayed for a reasonable time for public study of comments and other recent information, if and when released to the public, and how they tie to the Arrowhead vote tonight, which is to commit $1.5 million, more or less, to drawing up final plans for a building. Also, within the week, roughly within the week, new birth data came out, causing the Malone and McBroom projections to be further in dispute. So, you know, if the, it seems like, you know, possibly this evening, you plan to delay that vote, and I certainly encourage that. And in terms of looking at the survey comments, there's a diversity of ideas from the public. There's no one clear winner. And I think that's because the information that has been presented isn't coherent and On the list of bills this evening, there are two bills for an outfit called Degler Whiting Incorporated, one for gym seat inspections for about $4,000, and one for basketball backstop inspections for about $11,000. There's something wrong there, whether it's the, what shows up on the list of bills, or whether inspections are different than we would imagine.
Thank you for your comments. If there's any other comments on board action items, please approach the podium.
I'm going to talk about 13D as well. I'm going to fill in the numbers. 5.4% of $35 million is $1.809 million. And I already have that in an email from May, as far back as May. So, you know, to my two fellow members of the public, their mind is made up. You guys are voting for a new school. I'd bet my life on it. There's going to be no delay either. I'm going to make comments about KCBA, and these aren't meant that they're not a great firm, but these are reasons why I think you shouldn't do what I know you're going to do here in five, 10 minutes. Apparently, at least one KCBA employee and their child will benefit from a new Arrowhead. To me, that's at least a perceived conflict, addressed in Board Policy 011. Maybe you should look at it. Apparently, Fidavia and KCBA had a relationship prior to KCBA being picked for the project by the committee led by Fidavia. The whole process, the whole RFP process, in my mind, is in question. KCBA did not discuss and/or analyze the housing data, enrollment, and enrollment projections from M&amp;M in their study. Because I looked for it, I can't find it. Can't find anything in there about the enrollment, the housing, the pipeline, nothing. So, I don't know how thorough the evaluation was. Apparently, KCBA, up to this point, is designing a standalone school without considering other important factors, including up to 1,000 empty seats at Skyview, Arcola, district-wide full-day kindergarten, and increased enrollment at Worcester Elementary, as addressed by those two gentlemen. I talked about adding classrooms, too, and I was told my idea was silly. I don't think it's a silly idea. KCBA's drawings show a community center as part of the new Arrowhead, but did not explain how a community center became part of the new building, and how it would be used, and who would use it. And neither have you. But you're going to vote for a new school with a community center in it. I don't understand that. They were picked, KCBA was picked out of a field of seven architects by an administrative committee led by Fidavia. So, that committee actually picked the architect, not you guys. You guys confirmed the pick. So, in essence, the committee picked the architect. One of the things that concerns me is, according to the May correspondence that I got between Dr. Zerby and KCBA, is that they're considering, it seems like, considering doing away with public comment at the Act 34 hearing. They note, "This is the required public presentation," meaning the Act 34 hearing, "but we will have presented and asked for public comment three times before this hearing. We feel this is ample time to have public input and share district plans with the community." So, what are you going to do, away with public comment at the Act 34 hearing? Is that the plan? Because it certainly seems like it, from what I'm looking at there. Nothing I can say at this point is going to change anybody's mind upfront. You're going to vote for a new school, and you're going to make the same mistake they did with Skyview. So, that's why we call it Skyview 2. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other comments on board action items, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the board meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes held on July 16th, 2019, and the board meeting minutes held on July 23rd, 2019, as attached? Ms. Reese? Is there a second? Mr. Ryan? Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Eight to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to fiscal items. Can I have a motion to approve the list of bills and the treasurer's report as presented? Mr. Navarret? Is there a second? Mr. Earnshaw? Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those against? No, eight to zero. Thank you. Next, contracted services. May I have a motion to retroactively approve Karen Masup of Collegeville PA as an independent contractor to provide bus routing services for the period of August and September 2019 at a rate of $5,000 per month? First student will be reimbursing the district for this expense. Can I have a motion? Ms. Reese? Is there a second? Mr. Winters? Any comments? Yes.
Just one question, Dr. Zerby, Mr. Bricker. Is there a contract for these services?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Is that something that you could provide to us?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, one other question, too. What's the plan after September? I assume there's still needed, there's a need after.
Right now, I'm just trying to get past tomorrow.
Understood.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Eight to zero. Thank you. Next, appraisal services. May I have a motion to authorize the engagement of Matt Deraska, Vice President of CBRE, to appraise the property located at 2750 Morris Road, for all years at issue as noted in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas? The cost will be $5,000 for the first year's analysis, and then $1,800 for each subsequent year. Total cost $17,600. Have a motion? Mr. Navarret? Is there a second? Mr. Winters? Any comments?
Same question. Contract or engagement letter for this?
Let's handle through the attorney's office that we use to do the tax appeals with regards to the contract. So, that would be handled by them once the board approves it. They'll draw up the contract with the company.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Eight to zero. Thank you. Next is the master plan, Summer 2019 Projects. May I have a motion to approve the master plan, Summer 2019 Projects, Items 1 through 5, as presented? Ms. Reese? Is there a second? Ms. Cancro? Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Eight to zero. Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to authorize the administration to proceed with design and document preparation work in order to present bid responses for the board's review and consideration of an additional $537,104.97 in year three work, as presented? Can I have a motion? Ms. Reese? Is there a second? Mr. Winters? Any comments?
I will just say, I know this is a, this is not controversial, it's not the right word, but not a simple decision. And we have spoken, I don't know for how long, but over, over an hour, over the course of several meetings at property about this. And just due to the very unique code requirements for storage, and that they're going to get rid of the modulars, that, and that it was suggested by our administration and our facilities people, that is why, you know, I felt comfortable. But it was thoroughly thought about, but I wish it wasn't needed, but there's strange things that buildings need, and this is one of them.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Three, four, five, six, opposed. Motion passes six to two. Moving on to personnel items, are there any items the board would like to take separately? Yes.
Let's see. Okay, one second. I'll try to look at the list. Items L3 and L8.
Can I have a motion to approve personnel items? A through K. Let's do A through K. Ms. Reese? Can I have a second on A through K? Mr. Winters? Any comments from the board?
I'm not sure if this question is for A to K, so forgive me. Have we hired an aquatics director yet?
We have made an offer to an aquatics director, and they accepted, but we still are awaiting some paperwork until we get to the board.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I want to thank you, Che, and your team and the administration. I can't imagine the amount of activity that had to be done over the last few weeks with last-minute resignations and such, and the checkerboarding and all that goes into it. And to have, more or less, a fully-staffed, professional staff starting tomorrow is kudos to you, and Dr. Zerby.
Speaking of that, sorry, I apologize. What is still outstanding, and not to be negative, because I agree with everything Mr. Winters said, but I would imagine there's still some position?
There is. We still have a .5 Kinder position. We do have a long-term sub in that position, but it still is open for contract. And we have a .5 ELD position that is still open, and our Spanish position is open from the resignation last week. So, those are our contracted positions that are still open. We just, I think, filled a long-term sub Music position. We lost our candidate last week to a full-time position in another district, and we interviewed this afternoon and made an offer, and they accepted. So, we're awaiting paperwork at STS for that candidate.
Do you know the plan for the Spanish position? Because that's a pretty, I know that's a difficult position, but do you know the temporary plan?
We have five candidates externally at the moment. We have no internal interest. So, I'm, we're going to be interviewing as soon as possible, but we're hopeful.
Any other comments on A through K? All those in favor? Eight to zero. Okay, we'll move on.
I apologize. I would also like to do P and Q separately as well. Sorry about that.
Okay. Then, let's say, can I have a motion to approve L1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9? Is that correct, Mr. Winters?
Yes.
1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 9, L. Ms. Reese? Second? Mr. Earnshaw? Any comments from the board on those? Seeing none, all those in favor? Eight to zero. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve Item L3? Mr. Winters? And a second on that? Ms. Cancro? And comments from the board?
My understanding is the, these contracts are, I think, as explained last week, are related to those that have been moved not to their own liking or own request. These are supplemental contracts for moving because of the checkerboarding process, which is part of the contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have, all those in favor of L3? And those against? Passes seven to one. Thank you. Now, we're on L8. Can I have a motion to approve L8? Ms. Reese? A second on L8? Ms. Cancro? Comments from the board? Comments from the board?
Just one question. Is this amount in this item in addition to what was approved at the last meeting, which is around $10,900? Is that correct? Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? All those in favor? Against? Thank you, seven, one. Can I have a motion to approve items M, N, and O? The classified substitute list, volunteers, and there's nothing under community education. So M and N, really. Ms. Reese? Second? Ms. Hall? Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Eight to zero. Thank you. Item P, establishment of supplemental contract. Can I get a motion on that? Motion to approve item P, Ms. Reese? Second? Mr. Winters? Any comments?
I could make a suggestion here. Why don't we approve this for one season? Or maybe even two, so that we can evaluate the time commitment versus the hours, and then maybe delineate it more specifically as we approach the spring season. I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, but I know we talked about ways that we would offset these costs. Now, we're talking about $30,000. You said there's ways we could offset it. Wonder if it might be worthwhile, though, when we approve this for maybe the first two seasons, so that we can evaluate it, whether or not the position is needed. Do we see the savings, the cost savings that we thought we were going to have? And then maybe approve it then for the third, once we have that kind of information. My two cents.
Any other comments from the board on this one?
I do agree with Ralph. I just, it's hard for me to put my head around this. I do feel that shifting the athletic director's position now to be during the day, during the school, I understand the purpose that his time was shifted to a later day, therefore he couldn't get through the daily administrative-type activities he was required to do, which caused a lot of difficulties and bumps in the road. But I do think we need to analyze it, collect some data on the first two seasons, see what's going on with the day structure, and then see where the needs are and try to really look at it differently.
Any other comments? Mr. Ryan?
Kind of putting P and Q together here, looking at the job description here. I had mentioned last week about the, the hours required to do this, and I just want to identify bullet number one here, where it does say, "Attend and supervise the events scheduled." The way that this is written, so they are to attend and supervise every single event scheduled on the Mathacken Camp. Is that correct?
Yes, so obviously, there's multiple events going on, so they may need to rotate around. But yes, there, the idea is that this person will be supervised in the events that are taking place on Mathacken's campus.
And have we attempted to quantify that as of a week ago? Not that I asked for a quick turnaround or anything.
No, so here's, what we did is, is in order to come up with the $10,000, we estimated that an individual would likely, could spend anywhere from 15 to, you know, no more than 29 hours a week on this campus, depending on the activities that are scheduled that week. And in doing so, it equates out to maybe being about, anywhere between maybe $32, $30 an hour to about $40 an hour, depending on the, on the amount of hours that they put in for a particular week. But the, the Assistant Principal for, in charge of athletics and activities, will be the person supervising these, these individuals, and will be establishing the schedule for them to attend every event. And I guess, I guess, they're, when we say every event, that's hard to, I can't, I can't quantify that at this moment in time. It would be the events for which the now Assistant Principal, House Principal for, I believe, 10th grade would have formally been attending the events, to provide that similar evening supervision in all the three seasons.
And it was my understanding, sorry if I, that it's not just one person that does one season, like, would, and maybe I'm wrong, that, you know, maybe someone can't do everything one week. So it might be that one, one of the contracts takes something on Monday and one of the contracts takes something on Tuesday. So, I mean, you know, I don't know how possible it is. I, is, am I not correct in that?
Well, well, similar to other supplemental agreements, and you've seen them in the MEA collective bargaining agreement, where it, over, over the years, a, a single supplemental contract has been split from time to time to accommodate individual needs and the needs of the program. So you're absolutely right, Ms. Reese. You know, depending on people that apply and their availability and, and they're fit for the position, we may, we may find that, you know, we need two people to fit for the, the fall supplemental agreement, or we might need two people for the winter. But the, the total cost would be beyond what's stated here and the job description. So the contracts are listed as three contracts, and certainly, we can, as some board members have made comment, we can certainly, you know, limit it to two if that is of the interest of the board. But it is, it is important for us to, to get this approved so that we can ensure that we have the supervision appropriate for at least this season, and, and as we're in this season, obviously getting prepared for the, the winter season. So if, if it's a will of the board to just do two, I'm fine with that. We can always provide feedback in the, in the winter season as to how we did in that first season, and, and use that information to either adjust or to, you know, make a, make a more informed decision. So I'm fine with that.
I just have a question. I remember at the last meeting, it was mentioned that there were some other districts who also went with this model, and I had asked if there was a sense of what the cost was for those districts. I was wondering if that number is known.
I don't believe we were able to gather that, that information in time for this meeting. I apologize.
Thank you.
Couple more follow-up questions to my original one. At these events, we will still have security. This is separate and above and beyond that, correct? And I, I'm pulling, I'm sorry, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 here, where it says, "Assist the Facilities Department in the scheduling and covering of outside athletic community events..." Dot, dot, dot. Does this, was this previously covered under athletics and activities, or is this actually being pulled from facilities?
So it was done in combination with some of what Debbie Bennett does in the Athletics Office, and some of what Noreen and Tim Barbogallo do in facilities. So it's in a sense to try to condense some of the duplicated efforts between both departments when they schedule some of the buildings and the usage of those buildings for outside events. So to answer your, your question, Mike, yes, there is some of that is done with our Facilities Department and with Debbie Bennett, and hoping that this individual could help facilitate some of that.
Thank you.
So a follow-up question to what Mike just asked. So I think everybody knows, I'm heavily involved with Mathacken United Soccer Club, and one of the things that I do with them is help facilitate the conversations regarding facility reservations. So I talk to Debbie quite frequently, I talk to Tim quite frequently about, you know, renting the turf for the soccer club. So you're saying that those conversations now would go through this new person? As an example?
Potentially. It, it could be. So what we recognize is some of the things that we do internally, Debbie is scheduling, and some of the things that happen externally, Tim Barbogallo is scheduling. And sometimes the communication is difficult between the individuals. So if there's possible to have one person that coordinates both of those things, it would be beneficial for the district.
Yeah, and the point about covering outside games, usually, I mean, from the soccer club's perspective, when the soccer club rents the turf, we pay for a game manager separately to be there. So this person would not be covering those events, right?
None, yes, none of that would change, Ralph. It's just a, really a scheduling thing for us.
Then I'm going to move to amend this motion and change the language from one each per PIAA athletic season to one per the fall and winter PIAA athletic seasons?
Second?
Correct. The first two, first two PIAA seasons.
Okay. We have a motion to amend, to change the motion to now approve the establishment of two? Two event supervisor supplemental contracts for, one each for the first two PIAA athletic seasons at a rate of $10,000 per contract beginning August 28, 2019. Do I have a second on that amended motion?
Second.
All in favor of the, oh, sorry. Any comments from the board around this amended motion? All in favor of the amended motion? Six. And against? Two. The amended motion carries six to two.
So that was the motion to amend the motion. So now you are, now you have the...
Now we're voting on the amended motion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, to continue the comment on, on the amended motion, the way I look at it, I know we're, it's a hard one to swallow, but the, where I come around on this one is that we have increased our educational administrative support at the high school, and that's what we're paying for here with this $20,000. We did not have the coverage, from my understanding, that we needed for the four grades, based on dual responsibilities of Dr. Spiewak. So although it seems like we are, it, to me, it's $20,000 for additional education administrative support and providing equality among the administrators. That's my justification for voting for this.
Okay. So now we have...
Liz?
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I just, as I will vote again against this, I just feel the need to explain a little bit further. I don't know why I feel that need, but I will. To me, I think the hardest part about voting yes to this is the timing of this again, that this has already occurred. If this was an idea of the administration, however long ago, to do the House Principals, and how that was going to roll out, it should have been presented to us way in advance of tonight's meeting. I mean, the first season's already started. We have some information from how other school districts have done it, but we don't know how the information of how much it costs or what, what they pay out. I mean, it's just the unanswered questions that is the primary reason that I can't vote for this.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other comments? Mr. Navaret?
I just want to apologize for making your life difficult tonight.
That's okay. I'm doing it. It's okay. Okay. So we now have an amended motion. We have a motion that says, "Approve the establishment of two event supervisor supplemental contracts for the first two PIAA athletic seasons at a rate of $10,000 per contract beginning August 28." Can I get? Is there, what are we doing here? All of, oh, we're voting on it now. Okay. All in favor of that motion, please? Six. Thank you. And against? Two. So that motion carries as amended. Thank you. Okay. Now we're on Q, which is the job description, the supplemental contract. Can I get a motion to approve that job description? Ms. Reese? And a second for the job description? Mr. Winters? All in favor? Oh, sorry, comments?
Can somebody give me the definition? I think the, the one part about this, this job description that does give me pause is the, the loose definition of activities. It's one of those things that we've gone back and forth in the Education Committee of responsibility for Dr. Spiewak. So what is an activity that this position would be supporting?
The, the activities that are supported by the, the budget of the Mathacken School District. Typically where sponsors are hired by, by the board to perform supervisory duties.
And the, the House Principal understands that? I'm sorry, I was... I'm sorry, the House, the House...
Yes. Thank you. And for the, the Board President's knowledge, the job description does say in it three positions. So I'd imagine that the job description, based on the previous approved motion, needs to be amended as well.
So if the individuals who made the motion and seconded the approval of the job description are in agreement with revising that motion to state, "Approve the job description of the event supervisor for athletics and activities," revise consistent with having two positions, one for the fall and one for the winter?
As this, here I am.
That's fine. It's just, so if we decide to go forward in the spring, then we don't, we have to revise it again? Okay.
So that, that motion can, one alternative would be to... There are alternatives. One is to leave it as is, one is to eliminate the reference to the number of positions and, and whether it's one per PIAA athletic season or not. We could just remove that particular reference?
I think it's better to remove that particular reference.
Mr. Winters, are you in agreement? So the motion will be to approve the job description of the event supervisor for athletics and activities with the revision of removing the reference to three positions, one per PIAA athletic season.
Okay. Where were we for that? We had a motion and a second. Comments on that as revised? No, no more comments? Okay. All those in favor? Six. Against? Two. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to curriculum and programs. Can I get a motion to approve the PIAA athletic schedule for the 2019-2020 school year per Policy 123? Ms. Reese? And can I get a second? Mr. Navaret? Any comments?
I just have a quick comment or question, or what, I don't know what it is, but I didn't bring this up last week because we had a marathon meeting. I ran into a community member who was very sweet, an elder, elderly gentleman, who said to me, "Why are all the games, the football games, on Friday nights?" So I was like, "Oh, they, they are." And I looked on my phone, and I said, "Well, there's a scrimmage on Saturday," you know? Anyway, it just brought, it just brought something to my attention, that this older gentleman can't drive in the evening, and, you know, I don't know his situation, but I wanted to go pick him up and take him to a game. I just was curious. I approve this, I have no problems with it, but he, he brought up a good point, that we have this beautiful field, and the lights are beautiful, and we know Friday night light football and all that. But I just, just something to tell Dr. Spiewak. I don't know if there's a rule that most games are Friday night, but I did think he had somewhat of a good point, that we have this beautiful view and this beautiful field, and why are they always at night? So it's just something I thought was an interesting community input that I received. So just wanted to share that. And I am maybe going to go pick up that gentleman for a game.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor? Eight to zero, thank you. All right. There are no policies for either first or second reading. So now we're on 13. Let's do, I was going to take D separately. Is it okay if I take A, B, and C together? So can I have a motion to approve 13A, B, and C, gifts and donations, there's nothing under trips, and the appointment of the school safety and security coordinator as presented? Can I get a motion? Andrea, Ms. Reese? Can I get a second? Mr. Navarrett, thank you. Any comment on A, B, or C? Okay, all those in favor? Eight to zero, thank you. Okay, now we'll go 13D, professional services for Arrowhead Elementary School. This is a motion to approve KCBA Architects of Hatfield, PA to provide professional design and documentation services for new construction of the Arrowhead Elementary School located on Level Road in Lower Providence Township at a fee of 5.4% of the cost of building construction, pending review of contract by solicitor. Can I get a motion? Ms. Reese? Second? Ms. Cancro? And board comments, please.
I just wanted to comment on the member of the public who mentioned October, the October 22 date. I was under the impression that that October 22 date was more, if there was, was a vote more on the design of it, or not maybe the finished design, but that idea, maybe I was wrong, but that's how I read that.
Okay, any other comments on 13D? Mr. Unshah?
Not so much comments, but a few questions. One question was a dollar amount. And Dr. Zerby, I got your schedule you sent around at about 2 o'clock this afternoon relating to all the soft costs, and it shows KCBA at 1.482 million. Is that correct for this contract? Yes. Okay. That also shows a kind of an estimate of when that money would get spent. And I did some quick math and I had to do some allocations based on the amount spent from April to August, but if I just prorate that evenly over April to August and add the amounts for September to November and December to March, it totals $829,000 for fiscal 2019-2020. My question there is how will that be funded if this is approved?
We could fund that one of two different ways. One, we have the $1 million of the bond that we have not yet spent, that's already sitting there that we can use. We could also go out for a new bond and pay that, pay ourselves back at that point in time next year, or we could use the capital reserve.
Okay, my understanding, so it has not been determined how that money will, how we'll get funded? You're just giving me options.
Correct.
A few of those options, there's already money committed, like the capital reserve, we added money to it, but there were specific projects for that, and I thought the $1 million left from the bond was going to roll into the 2019 master plan or 2020 projects. So that's to be determined. This schedule also shows that there's other soft costs to be incurred during fiscal 1920, and if I do the same proration in addition, that adds another, well, it takes the 829,000 up to 1.4 million dollars. And those activities include surveying, test borrowings, asbestos documentation, permits, inspections, et cetera. So how would that get funded? And has that been determined?
It has not been determined. That would be something that the Finance and Property Committee would have to see. Again, same way that we funded the other projects, we would fund them in advance and then reimburse ourselves with a bond. Typically, that bond would be next year. We still have borrowing capacity of about $4.5 million that we could take this year also.
Okay, but that, those borrowings have not been approved, am I correct?
Not at this time.
Okay. So really, just my conclusion then is that the funding for these costs to be approved at item 13D as well as soft costs to be incurred in 2019-2020 have not been determined yet. That's my conclusion there. When this item got added to the agenda, I'd expected to see a contract with KCBA, at least a draft to review. Is that contract available?
It is not.
Okay. I have a concern with that as well because I have no idea under what terms KCBA will provide these services. I don't know the term of the contract, I don't know the billing terms, do they have to hit certain billing milestones before rendering a bill to the district? Does the district have any termination rates? Does it have any recourse regarding design rework? Are there any performance penalties? Are there any restrictions on use of third-party contractors? Who owns their work product? And were there any dispute resolution mechanisms in contract? In addition, I've never reviewed an architectural services contract, so I did some research and I found a list of about a page and a half of items that should be considered an architectural contract. And a lot of those, some of those go to providing protections to the district so we don't have another Eagle Bill that we heard at the beginning of the meeting. Okay? So for those reasons, I have concerns with approving item 13D. So I would like to make a motion to table this until such time as we determine how to fund the expenditures under this contract and to give the board time to review the
Are there any other comments? Okay, there's a mo...
I just, I'm sorry, I keep pressing the wrong button. I think what Brian is saying is very valid. I just think we should, just like that, I agree with all the points he brings up.
Is, is what Brian is suggesting doable, and I would imagine it is, but doable in 30 days? And does it cause us issues with the timeline? I'm imagining not, but I just wanted to discuss that. 30 days, that big of a deal in terms of the timeline? Because we don't, you know, what, you know, if it's, we need to move on with renovation or rebuilding, that's what I'm saying. But his points are valid and doesn't mean I wouldn't do it and...
Yes, I am. So, you know, like many other agreements that we go into, we have a clause that says pending review of contract by solicitor, so we've done that probably a million times, I guess. So certainly, the board would need to see the contract and certainly with whatever research Mr. Unshah has done in terms of some of the protections that could be insured that are in the contract, and that information can be shared with our solicitor. He would be the one if the board approves us moving forward. Again, this motion is just what it says. It doesn't say you're building a new school. Okay, I just, I just want to, I just want to tell you that right now. A year from now, if you approve this today, a year from now, you should have all the information necessary to determine when the bids come in, whether or not you're going to build a new school. You will have bids, you will know, you know, a lot of the numbers, you will know what the, you know, what the, what the borrowing rates are at the time, all the information that you're dying to know at this very moment for certainty, and I understand the complexity of it, but this is really a motion to get this ball moving forward. The choice we made back in January was, A, are we going to continue using Arrowhead as a school for students in the district? You made that decision and we move forward with this process. The second thing we need, we need to decide here this evening is, A, are we going to be renovating the building? Because we know something has to be done with the building, that's no question. Or are we going to do new construction? With the presentations that were provided, with your review and public comment, you can surely rest that most eyes and most ears are tuned to the building of a new Arrowhead Elementary School. While it costs more money to do a new construction, it is, it is within reason the most logical approach, given all the information that we have at this time. So in terms of having a contract in advance of this, certainly our solicitor and his firm have had extensive experience doing construction contracts for other school districts with contractors like KCBA. So I have confidence, as I do with all their work and in their ability to do this and to deliver something that will help, as Mr. Unshah said before, prevent us from getting into situations that we have heard here. And I think, I think maybe even more importantly, what he, what he may not have been clear on what he said was, and I just want to rephrase it, is that there are options along this path for the board to opt out of this process. Because I also, I also believe that we need to get moving. That's, that's statement number one. But number two, a lot of things can change in two months, six months, 12 months, that may not necessarily deem it as attractive or as advantageous to continue with the process. And now, that being said, there needs to be a path for the board to, to get out of this process. So while we might have spent money along the way to look at new construction, we certainly have to have the ability to get out of it if, if in fact, through the document preparation process and the, and the studies that so exist here, don't lead to what we believe to be the best outcome for the district. So with that said, that is going to be built into this. So delaying this will only put additional strain on the process of moving, getting something moving forward for this particular building. If in fact, we are going to keep Arrowhead as a building for use by students, and if in fact, we believe that new construction is the best option, we need to get moving on this process with KCBA and so that we can put the, take the time to put the language and stuff together. Because by not approving this, now he's going to be spending time developing what needs to be really a comprehensive contract to provide all the protections. So that's going to take time, that's going to be an expense, and we still haven't approved him to move forward, and we still don't know whether or not we want to move forward with new construction. So as, as Mike had shared with the, Mike from KCBA has shared with the board at the work session, now is really the time to make a decision. With their timeline, this process will allow us to, I believe it was in 2022, we'll be able to move students, if everything continues on its path, move students into a new Arrowhead in August of 2022. If we, if we push this back, you know, now we're, now we're moving students in in September of 2022. And to what, I just, I don't know what you're going to get from that decision. So while I certainly respect Mr. Unshah's comments, and I appreciate any of that information you could share with us if in fact, the board does move forward with the passage of this, because I just want to make sure that we include all your wishes as well as anyone else's about things that need to make sure that we try to get into the contract. But again, and just so you know, a contract is, has to be signed by two parties, so just because we want something in it, doesn't necessarily always, you know, make for a contract that the other party would be willing to sign, so. But having all those things in advance would be certainly helpful as well. So I hope Ms. Reese and any other members of the board understand that in terms of the contract, now in terms of the financing, certainly there's, there's going to be some costs. You know, we, we can, we can talk about that again all evening, but as Mr. Bricker had mentioned, there's a number of ways and very, very few that we would use, and we can use a combination of all of those funding mechanisms within this fiscal year to address those matters. So I think that while we haven't made that decision yet, we know that our financial advisors will be coming to the Finance Committee in September to talk about not only some refinancing of some bonds, which could likely free up some money for this process, but also talk about what we need to do in order to fund these actions within this timeframe. So I believe we're right on schedule for making all the things, decisions that are necessary if the board wants to continue moving forward with a new construction concept and with KCBA to help design that path forward.
Thank you for explaining that. I, I am comfortable voting tonight, you know, I appreciate his points and you make good points. I spent a lot of time with them, we picked a very reputable company, we have Fidavia now. I wasn't here for past major projects like this, but I know between Fidavia and KCBA and the Property Committee and things we've learned from the history of this district that we will be doing this carefully, no matter, no matter what, and a lot differently than Eagleville and Scotty, quite frankly.
So there's a motion to table this...
Liz, can I...
Yes.
Can I quickly?
Yes.
First, Brian, thank you for your comments there and Dave for your response. This is over the last three and a half, almost four years at this point, sort of an odd thing that you have to wrap your mind around, that a lot of times you're approving something with the contract coming second. And I can tell you from past experience over these years, that when you do your research and you find things that are important to you, and we approve something like this tonight, do what I've done in the past, send all of that information and all of your concerns to Dr. Zerby, have a phone call with him. You know, those concerns can be incorporated into the contract. So I would just say voting no, you're certainly welcome to do what you want, but I would say that that is a, an alternative route to appeasing some of your concerns, is making sure that your specific concerns that you've identified get immediately to Dr. Zerby and passed on to the solicitors so that they can be incorporated in the contract. So just as a, as an update there.
No, I understand that there's been situations where contracts have been approved, but I mean, I can't recall any contract of any significance that has not been at least a draft provided to the board prior to a vote being taken. It may be pending solicitor review, but it's always been attached, at least provided to the board for anything of significance. And my view, this is significant. I mean, even if I was, I just don't see how you can vote on committing 1.5 million dollars of district funds without seeing a draft of a contract or having a solid plan on how to fund it. I, I, maybe it's just me, maybe, I don't know.
Well, and on the other, on the flip side of that, maybe I can see why you can't vote because I spent hours and hours and hours on many tours and spending time with the company that you didn't. And I understand that, we all have our strengths and our time and our weaknesses, but just to make it clear, you know, there's been a lot done for this. So that's why I...
And I'm not saying, I didn't say there wasn't. I'm just saying, where's the contract defining the terms of how 1.5 million dollars gets spent? It's fine to go on tours, but you know, it has nothing to do with committing 1.5 million dollars without a contract or a mechanism to pay for it.
I met with all the administrators who did sign contracts just like that, that's why. I get your point, I'm just giving you the other side.
So I searched my notes here and I have dozens of meetings over the last two years where we approved contracts pending solicitor review. This looks like another case of analysis paralysis, right? We're going to ask the question, we're going to keep asking for more information so we can delay the process any further. So there's a motion on the table right now, correct, to table this motion? I'll call the question.
So there's actually been no second, so there's no need to vote on a motion that hasn't been seconded?
So is there been no discussion then?
Oh, you're continuing to have discussion under the original motion. So there was a motion that was made, there was no second, at this point you're just engaging in further discussion on the motion? The original motion?
I was going to ask a question, Mr. Navarrett. Your review of those contracts, what were the dollar value of some of those? Anything approaching 1.5 million dollars?
I'll be happy to discuss it with you afterward.
So no information?
Any other comment or discussion from the board? There was no second on the motion to table, so the motion stands to approve KCBA Architects as written in 13D. With no further comment, all those in favor? With no further comment, all those in favor? Again, eight to one. Thank you. Seven to one, sorry. Thank you. Next is dates for board members' calendars. We have our committee meetings, and work session meeting on September 17th, and a regular board meeting on September 24th. Is there any old business? Mr. Ryan?
Just real quickly, I was wondering if we had an update on our enrollment numbers over the last, you know, week and a half, since we've had the last report, just to see, you know, I had heard, you know, heard things that we've had a lot of uptick in recent enrollments over the last week or so, and, you know, it helps to confirm whether the rumors are true, and if it's going to require any, you know, future hirings or anything of that nature. So if we have any update on that?
We'll provide an update. The last update included those appointments that were already on the books. So we likely are just ending those appointments, which would include, if all that transpired appropriately, likely would be the numbers that were listed in that original report back to you. But we'll get you an update, and certainly we'll be providing an update probably within 15 days after the start of school, which is typically the timeframe when we see students who may not necessarily return that we weren't apprised of.
Is there any other old business? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just a question, is there any update on Audubon Elementary and the discussions with Lower Providence?
Yes, there is. So since the last time we had discussions where Lower Providence Township supervisors presented their recommendations, there have been two meetings. I do apologize, I can't recall the dates of the meetings, but the meetings were held in my office, and the people involved. We had two supervisors and the township manager from Lower Providence, and myself, Mr. Navarette, and Ms. Aubrey Larsonese were present. We are planning to meet again this coming Friday, and with hopes to be able to take a recommendation back to both respective boards about how to proceed forward. So we are hopeful that possibly in September, we'll be making a recommendation to both boards about what the potential collaborative action can be.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else for old business? Mr. Navarette, or Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Navarette. You know, I said before, when I first came in to Amanda and Dr. Zerby, that video, the back-to-school video, was fabulous. Thank you. Well-produced, great, great to see your personality. Sorry, I know you're under the weather tonight, but it was really well-produced, message was great. I thought it was really, really well-done. Are we going to see any blooper reels coming out of that, or no? Okay. The only question I had to.
Well, I just want to make it clear that I caught every football that was thrown.
I do want to note too, one more thing. We had talked before about doing a post audit on the pay changes for substitutes. I know we're in a tough spot right here, but we talked about maybe we're going to address that this summer, I don't know if that should probably come back through education, but something that, as a board member, I would like to see how those changes that we made a year ago impacted our fill rates for last year, as well as what we ended up paying for substitutes overall.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, just wanted to go back to Mr. Earnshaw's finance committee meeting minutes, and one of the topics that was discussed, one of the topics was the earned income tax, the per capita tax there. And I understand that, you know, I believe Mr. Navarette was not in attendance that night, so the committee was only two members. I was just curious, Mr. Earnshaw, because I was the one who actually asked maybe that we could bring this back in front, this has been a topic of conversation since I've been on the board. Could you give a kind of a rundown for the full board on what was discussed that evening, just in general?
Sure. The reasons I brought up the possible elimination of the per capita tax were, the reasons I cited were the inefficient billing. Billing costs are about 11 and a half percent of the revenues the district receives. Multiple separate bills are sent to the same address. And I gave the example that within my household, I got four separate bills, one for each member of my family, to the same address, separate envelopes and everything. So that adds the inefficiency. And also, I learned that even though the per capita bills include revenues that go to the townships, they do not share any of the billing costs. So they're getting a free ride on our backs on, from a billing perspective. In addition, there's been billing errors in the past. We've had, a couple years ago, there were issues with Shenandoah residents not being billed the per capita tax, which has now been rectified. And I also gave an example of a concern relating to a current billing practice where, whereby if your child's a full-time student, he or she does not need to pay the per capita tax. So when I called about my daughter's bill, who's a full-time college student, they just said, okay, you don't have to pay, you can throw the bill away. No verification or anything like that. So potential lost revenues there as well. The revenue from this tax is about $234,000 annually, that's the net number, revenue offset by billing costs. And so we had some discussions and talked about how that revenue could be recovered, either through other cost reductions or putting that revenue into the property tax. And where we left it was, Dr. Zerby was going to discuss sharing a billing cost with the townships, and contacting Burckheimer, who was the billing agency, regarding some of the billing concerns that were raised. And we plan on following up on that at our September meeting.
Thank you. So just to confirm, this isn't a done issue at this point? There's still more work coming down the pipe, and this will be coming back up again in the near future?
That's correct. My hope is that in September, we discuss it at the finance committee meeting again, and then possibly bring it to the work session in September, if not, then hopefully by October.
Great.
The one thing I want to add to the minutes, and maybe you said it, was even if we do not do it, the township still has the right to do it, and then they will collect all of the money that they receive. So, in other words, the community will not know any different. They could still continue to receive that tax, and they will not know that the school wasn't doing it. Does that make sense?
Can we clarify that, that we approve that, correct?
So we do approve it, we voted on it, we voted on it this year to keep it the same as it was before. So what would happen is if we, the $15, let's just say, $10 is the school district's. If we chose not to take our $10, the townships have the right to take that $10 and add it to their tax. So you would still get taxed at $15. From what I understand in talking to Burckheimer, that is something that they would gladly do, the townships. They would go right back up to the same number. So you're paying $15, $10 to us, $5 to the municipality, you just pay $15 to the municipality and not to the school district.
But would the township board of supervisors have to vote to take that increase?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that it's not an automatic done deal thing. I mean, we are, it's the same residents, but we are two separate entities. And if they're getting by with $5, and we decide that, you know, we're not going to go this path anymore, but they want to now increase it, and they want the $15, then that's something that they have to respond to, the residents and the taxpayers. You know, I think we need to make sure that we realize that we're with that in the school district, and they're the township, and they should be kept separate. So just my thought process.
And I share that. That was my exact, pretty much my exact same response when that was raised at our committee meeting.
Just that it generates over $200,000, correct? And that, when you look at, I do think what Brian had made was, if there's a 4% cost, but when there's a 15% cost to do the billing, and perhaps that's such a high cost, but if we could lower the cost and share it with the community, however, we're losing that $200,000 in income.
That $200,000 would then be removed from the revenue side when we do the budgeting, and that would have to be made up through either cuts or tax increase.
Across our entire tax base, and not just residential tax base.
Correct. That would go, assuming, depending where you would make the cut, I mean, but it's the real estate tax typically.
Yeah, this is a good one. I'm glad you brought it up last week, this month, Brian. I'm sorry, I was in China and I couldn't get on Skype to attend. The one thing that we should check on before that meeting, when we discuss it again, is what is our obligation around that tax? I thought when we looked at this before, there was a statement that there was an obligation for us to have such a tax, and then if you didn't, there was some other mechanism, or something else that had to be done.
I'm not aware of anything of that. I know that Springford eliminated it about two or three years ago.
Any other old business? Okay, does anyone have any new business?
Not really business, just a thank you to everyone who worked over the summer, all the work that nobody sees, all the facilities, people to get the buildings ready, all the work in the curriculum office. Mr. Bricker probably has not seen eight hours of sleep in a long time getting the transportation stuff together. So if you do have transportation issues, there's a number, call it, we'll work it out, and everyone's going to get to and from school tomorrow. Mr. Regina, I'm sure, has also not slept. I think Dr. Zerby is sick this time of year quite often, after all the hard work. So just good luck to all the staff and the teachers that got their rooms ready, and good luck to the students tomorrow, since that's why we spend time sitting here at these meetings.
Anyone else under new business? Mr. Navarette?
Yeah, just want to say that, you know, we took this vote on Arrowhead tonight, and it's been a long process to get to this point. As Mike said, it's been three and a half to four years. We've been through enrollment studies and utilization studies, and facility tours and facility studies. This is an exciting time for us as a district. We've got, we'll have a new building that will meet the needs of our students for the next 40, 50 years plus. It'll address the deficiencies in the current building, both from a facility standpoint and from a maintenance standpoint. This is exciting. I look forward. Mike, Jamie, I can't wait to work with you guys and move this project forward. Thanks.
As a point of clarification on that, you had said there's another vote to build a new building, and I thought this was for architects?
I said that.
How are you reconciling that with what?
I said that a year from now, you'll have bids in front of you, and that will, if you choose to accept the bids, that's when construction begins.
Yep.
Any other new business? Okay, now it's time for courtesy of the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to provide comments on matters that could come before the Board of School Directors. If anyone has anything they wish to say for courtesy of the floor, please approach the podium.
Eight to one in favor. You know, there was never a chance that that vote was going down. I could have bet $100 on that and made some money. Whoever saw the advanced landscape technology installation of the turf field? Anybody know? Because I know everybody's enraged about Eagleville, but didn't we have a problem with the turf field? That we had to go into litigation about? And that was being overseen by, I think, Fidavia, wasn't it? Am I right? Could be. I think if you checked the docket, I think there were three entries on the docket when there was lawsuits filed. I don't hear any outrage up there about how, you know, things get managed currently. I know everybody wants to go back and blame other people, but I think that's what they have an inspector from the township do. The inspector from the township comes out and inspects the project. So you may want to go to the township and find out what happened. That's just a suggestion. 70% of taxpayers do not have children in the district, nor are they functioning in any capacity for the district. You all have kids in the district, except for Mr. Earnshaw. And he's the only person, I think, thinking about fiscal responsibility. The tour committee did not have one single taxpayer and general member of the public, like myself, on the Arrowhead Facility Tour Committee. Not one. And that committee gave recommendations to the superintendent about how we go forward on what project we do. Not one person, like myself, was on that committee. But instead, you had nine school board members, four home and school people, with at least half of them from Arrowhead, or had kids in Arrowhead, seven teachers from Arrowhead, one Arrowhead support staff, one Woodland Elementary principal, one member of KCBA Architects, one superintendent, and one director of facilities. Now, there's an unbiased committee. What did you think you were going to get? Are they going to say, no, don't build it? I think all those self-interested people are all in favor of building a new school. M&amp;M's projection for enrollment for the year 21-22, the one we paid all kinds of money for, like 61 grand, is 1632. So maybe there's something wrong with M&amp;M and their projections, because they're wrong about that, they're wrong about the birth rate, they're wrong about the housing statistics, but we based your whole decision on M&amp;M's study. Really doesn't make sense. But this thing was all a done deal back at the August 28th meeting in 2018, where we almost had a catastrophe where the board was going to vote to not consider closure at all. Mr. Navarette wanted to vote to remove closure as an option. He wanted, he said, let's put everybody on the record, I don't think there are the votes on the board to tolerate even a discussion about closing Arrowhead. Wow. It was all done back in August, and you guys just put the finishing touch on the cake. So, again, what can I say? We had a superintendent at Jeffrey Miller with the Scottyview project, who left the district and went to work for the architect and the bond company.
Thank you.
I think you guys need to remember that stuff.
If anyone else has any comments for courtesy of the floor, please approach the podium.
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. The first thing I want to address, the survey comments on a new Arrowhead that were posted on the district's website. I think you had them for almost a month, and then it just got posted last week. One of the comments said, for the board to, along the lines of, for the board to stop listening to the Three Stooges that go to every meeting, and especially the ex-school business manager that was let go. Okay, that's a comment that was written by somebody that was scrutinized by the chief executive officer of this district, and allowed to be put on the website. Now, that should have never made it to the website. Okay? That sounds like a form of bullying, to allow that to be put on the website. And I believe the superintendent is responsible for that. And I think it should be addressed by the board, to not allow things like that to go on the website. First of all, there should be no credence to somebody that writes something with those comments in it, and it should not be posted on there. All right? I'm sure Mr. Navarette saw a lot of Stooges in Hong Kong running around in the streets, But the superintendent's responsible for that going on there, and that's bullying to the people that come to this meeting. I think you should still close Arrowhead. I think you would save $1 million a year, you would save $1 million a year in operating costs that could be used for new programs at the high school. And by the way, in the last five or six years, we went from being ranked 11th or 13th in the state by U.S. News &amp; World Report about six years ago, to a ranking of 59th at the end of last year. Okay? That's a backward trend that's been happening over the last five or six years, maybe since October of '13. And I think you, as a board, need to address that. Okay? That is a serious, serious, serious matter for the kids that are about to embark on their future. Okay? 59th, we dropped down to, from like 11th or 13th, five or six years ago. I think if you close Arrowhead, you can continue projects at the pace and the schedule that you set out to do to make these remaining schools. you set out to do to make these remaining schools better, since they were, you know, forgotten about for so many years. I think the K through five structure is probably, probably better educationally for the kids. I think the $400,000 a year for four or five years in an increase to the debt payments, maybe we can throw that at the high school too, in addition to the million dollars a year we'd save by closing Arrowhead. I would be the first to support a new school if I saw it was warranted and there weren't alternatives that could be addressed to save $35 million plus millions of dollars in interest. I'd be the first to support a new school. Believe me. I support the kids. A high school storage building for half a million dollars? Maybe you throw that at the high school, come up with some engineering programs, 3D printing programs, math, science, or whatever, instead of a storage building for paints and poster boards for the post-prom party. Thirty thousand dollars for an event planner? Throw that towards the kids too. What have we done for all these years without an event planner? What did the coaches do? The coaches sees that the refs get paid, that everybody's organized, that there's a trainer around. That's what the coaches do. Are we going to reduce their salaries by $30,000? Hopper Horsham had a position of event coordinator. Dr. Zerby told us he was going to find out. He said two school districts had the event coordinator. He was going to find out what they paid. And we don't know how the salary was calculated for the $30,000 either. Mike Ryan asked that question. We don't know how we arrived at $30,000. We don't know how we arrived at $30,000.
Thank you for your comments. If anybody else has anything for courtesy of the floor, please approach the podium.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. Your vote to engage the architect, in my opinion, is totally irrational. It's disgusting to me. There's process in many, many things that we do in this country and process is thrown out, thrown out the window. And there's more than one person to blame. Recently, I handed out, sent to the board information on, on birth data, where the, where the M&amp;M projections, estimated births in 2017, going out through the next five years, close to 320 per year. The line through births over the last dozen or more years is going down. It's headed towards 250. Last year, it was, in 2017, the births were around 260. In 2018, the births are around 270. That's 50 or 60 students per year that, according to cohort type projections, won't be here. Another thing is relative to, Dr. Zerby in the spring mentioned a plan to come to the board in October with a plan for full-day kindergarten. I don't see how that fits in with the Arrowhead Forward Plan. But more than that, in Radnor, a few years back, they went from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten. And as one former resident there said, it was over the objections of the parents. A year ago, there was a claim that the half-day kindergarten kids, going from half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten there, that the, the gain in grade-three PSSA tests was a success. And also, along the way, there were 10 additional teachers required, as well as some facilities improvements. Well, I've done an analysis on the, the test data for that first group of students that went through their full-day kindergarten program. And as you well know, there are four categories of scoring for the, for the tests. And in grade three, there are scores in English Language Arts, or ELA, and scores in math. And in the Radnor District, the percent of the students in the advanced area went down six and a half percent. In that same year, combining Mathacton and Souderton School Districts, the advanced test scores went up 3.9%. And in the Tridaphrin School District, where it's half-day kindergarten, there were basically no changes from the prior year to, to, to last year.
Thank you for your comments.
So there's, there's proof that full-day kindergarten is a waste of money and it harms some of the students' performance.
Thank you for your comments. If anyone else has anything to say for courtesy of the floor, please approach the podium.
I'm going to move this just a little. Joseph Paholsky, Warceder. Madam President, members of the school board, I rise today to address three observations over a decade and a half of having my children in the school. And keeping with the benefits and goals of Mathacton Excellence, I'd like to address those issues and see if my points could be looked at and see if there's any benefit. The first deals with high school graduation. And it's a simple thing. The school board members in Mathacton, even though some of you have postgraduate degrees, do not wear robes or the hoods of the schools that you came from or the studies that you did to get your postgraduate degree. And why that brings a bigger issue for me is, the kids look at those hoods, the kids look at the teachers and everyone else. Dr. Zerby, yourself, they look. Where did he go to school? What did he study? What happened? And for us, it shows that people in general are interested in board members that are making decisions for the future of our, our individuals. So I wish that during this journey of education, we can add that through, because in the past and in the future, you'll have people with postgraduate degrees. And even though it might seem simple, in the stands, people are looking, people are pointing, and it's a positive thing to see somebody who worked very hard in education to move forward. I see my time is going to be limited, but the second part was during my time here, I've worked with post-prom, swim team, football, and track. And to limit what I was going to say is that you have a vocational training center, you have individuals that go for their Eagle Scout. I personally offered, through people of my connections, to donate materials so Eagle Scouts can work on building a shed for the football team or something for the track team, to have the VOTEC to enhance their schools. So when they come for the football team, like the electrical truck out there, people say, I work on that. I do that. And it's one of those things that, it might not seem like a lot, but the kids want to feel like they're making a difference and that is part of it. And the, the way of donating money to parents' clubs or whatever, I think you should have an umbrella tax exempt number so each one can work together. And unfortunately, even though it is there, the system is so antiquated. I come from Washington. That's where I was this morning. And even I have sometimes difficulty getting through the paperwork or the procedure. Not that I'm bright, it's just I have a hard time going through it and I've had many people that have tried to help me in the past. My time is almost limited. The last one is, when an individual is recognized on a national level, and I'll say this just from my point, and he was recognized by the school, but, and once again, the procedure was a little difficult. It is something dear to my heart. Coach Lapre had a flag flown over the nation's Capitol in his honor because of what he, he did, the coaches and the students, for individuals who have special needs and made them a part of the Mathacton team, family, in and outside the classroom. We should have some kind of individual process where it makes it easier for it to be done. My time is up. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments tonight. If anyone else has anything to say for courtesy of the floor, please approach the podium.
Good evening, Kelly Skinner, Lower Providence. I'll try to be as quick as possible. You want to reset the clock? First of all, congratulations on 13D tonight. I can't say if that was right or wrong. I don't know anything about it, but I could tell it was a huge, huge issue and you probably feel a lot better for where you are at with it now. Everything you do ultimately comes down to a human issue and that is the students. And I'm going to tell you briefly about my son, which is not something I generally speak about publicly. My son starts sixth grade tomorrow as a 10-year-old. When he goes into 12th grade, he will start as a 16-year-old. When he was three, he was diagnosed autistic savant. And I left my job as an attorney in Philly, gave up my career, so that I could be at home. I learned everything I could about it and I helped him. We paid thousands of dollars for private therapists. We worked with the MCIU to get extra support and then finally entered Mathacton where we got even additional support for him. The, the sacrifice and sufferings of families with special needs children, gifted and disabled, are quiet and behind the scenes. We don't worry about things like whether or not we can get to a Friday night football game. We don't get to worry about things like that. I was told I'd never go back to work again. My son would have to live at home and be dependent on me for much of his life, at least until he was 30. He may or may not get to go to college, no matter how smart he is. When he was in second grade, a miracle happened. The autisticness faded over the course of six to nine months. Tristan's now part of a national study out of Wisconsin with a little over 300 children who were autistic and now no longer are, that all, all these 300 students have faded between first and second grade. It's being handled by Dr. Trefford, a renowned world expert in autistic savants. He was an consultant on the movie Rain Man. Tristan has told me repeatedly that the only place he feels safe at Mathacton is in his gifted class. He feels like a freak, loser, weirdo, and a social misfit, except in his gifted class. It is the glue that's holding everything together for us. And that's how important it was that Mrs. Clark stay and the program remain the same. If you had changed the program and altered it for us, it would have been devastating to Tristan and vicariously, our whole family. And we are not the only ones. Tristan's a weird, you know, situation, but there are many similar stories right here in Mathacton. And if you had changed the program, it would have meant that the backend, the other side, the disabled side would have needed more support. It would have cost you more money. He would have gone back to seeing a therapist in the school and other support services that we've otherwise been able to take away. Because here's the thing about your gifted program, it's not just for smart people. It has these tentacles subcutaneously that, that help what's, what else is ailing these children and whether they're dual special needs or not. There are other issues that it's just addressing naturally and it's a wonderful thing about it. And that's how important it is. We want to see a good faith effort and due diligence with the audit. We just want to see that. We want to see the resources put to it. We want to see the right people on the committee. You know what a good faith audit looks like. And I would, I would argue very plausibly that gifted children are special needs children. You can consult with your attorneys if you need better definition of that. And I think because it's not just regular curriculum, but special needs curriculum, it warrants even more due diligence, more resources. I mean, for God's sake, send a couple teachers to the page conference just once. That's where all the information is. That's where the experts are. Let them do what they want to do. They're biting at the bit to do the research and do what needs to be done to help these children. So that's all I want to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. If anyone else has any comments for courtesy of the floor, please approach the podium. Anybody else? No? All right. Any other board comments for the evening? Mr. Navaret?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. The Fields Project, the board at the time neglected to hire an Ours rep because they wanted to save $100,000 to $130,000. And Fidavia was brought on board in February of 2017 in response to some of the problems they found with the Fields Project. Thank you.
Any other board comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? Adjourn.